The July 15, 2013 meeting and public hearing of the City Falls Church Planning Commission is now in order. Ms. G, would you call the roll, please? Yes.
Mr. John?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Meigs?
Here.
Ms. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
Mr. Bodiska?
Here.
Mr. Rankin will be absent this evening.
Thank you. I'd like to have a motion for adoption of this agenda, please.
Double.
Thank you, Lindy. Is there a second? Second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Are there planning commission reports?
Oh, you start.
Melissa?
Okay, well, last week, Wednesday night, we had a joint meeting with AAB for a first look at the assisted living facility planned for where the current Burger King is on Broad Street. I think good news, they're looking for a special section to get up to a fifth story. And so alignment is going to look really good between the hotel and the Broad, Broadway. So it'll be a nice movement. Because that's a little bit higher elevation, but it'll kind of look good. Actually, I really think this is the best for how the hotel's going to look. Because we all know the hotel's going to kind of look weird there by itself.
Right, yeah.
So now we'll have a companion building for it. Generally, you know, they're going for more of a old-fashioned kind of look to the building. They want it to be aligned with the type of people who would stay in the building, older people, that they feel comfortable with it. Because it is an assisted living facility. I do think, at first look, we felt that there was a little bit too much siding. The front is pretty much brick, and there is some brick on the side. But the back, they put a lot of siding in it, saying that they wanted to transition into the neighborhood by having it be siding. But I think we all can agree that five stories of siding doesn't look homey. And so I think that's one thing we're going to have to look at, is that facade. I don't have a problem with there being some siding. And in fact, I don't really have a problem if they put siding on the side facing the hotel. As long as they can prove to us that that's a good material, that would stand up and be good in 10 years. Because we don't want to build in with materials that don't last.
Right.
But, you know, because with the hotel thing, it's only going to be 10 feet from the hotel, so it's not going to be that visible. But I do feel like the side facing the Broadway especially should be brick, because the Broadway is brick.
Mm-hmm.
Or at least some of it. They have a courtyard in there, and if they want the courtyard to be siding, because it'll be brighter, because it's a light side, that's, I think, is fine. So anyway, I think that we'll get a good look at it. I think it'll be good development. It'll go with what we have there already. I think it'll make the area look better.
And was this just a conceptual drawing, or were they getting more into actual?
It was a little bit more than that.
It's pretty close to what you're going to get in a package, in that they have different views, different elevations, they had some floor plans. They're not all the way there, but they're pretty close.
Okay.
So I expect, I don't know, Mr. Snyder, can we expect to see their package in the next couple of weeks?
As a package or as a work session first?
Or as a work session first, I guess.
We will be looking to have a work session, and this will go probably to City Council for a work session, perhaps Council and Planning Commission can look at it at the same time.
Right. Okay.
Before it would go forward, I think, as an SE, they would want to take a look at it.
Right.
There were three of our people there, and two of us, and we all made it pretty darn clear, and Jim Snyder did too, that this was not up to par.
Okay.
In architecture, and the, architecture's not that bad, but they did some funky stuff that just...
Well, that's why I think it would be good to have a work session before we get the package.
Right, we definitely...
Yes, I think...
I mean, even if it's an August work session that we have to kind of squeeze in.
And there's going to be no underground parking, it's going to be surface parking, but it's around, you enter and then go around, the surface parking is facing the hotel.
Right, and it's kind of a deck. It's a covered deck.
So this is assisted living, and there are people wouldn't be keeping their own cars?
No.
Their expectation is that they don't...
No ambulatory?
Yeah, it's their expectations there'd be very little cars. But they have, they are going to have retail on the front.
Okay.
They're going to have retailers open to the public as well, like a cafe kind of thing, that's a service for their, for their residents, as well as be open to the street.
Right.
So they're going to, and they're going to have two, they have space for two businesses, so they'll have parking for the businesses. They need parking for the staff and the caretakers. And then people may have people come in, like social workers or things, you know.
Right.
So they'll have room for that. So we'll have to look at that parking. They did have a parking analysis report showing how they thought this would work compared to other assisted living facilities. I didn't think the parking was too out of, you know, wack, to what it was.
It just seems like a small lot for surface parking, but...
It is.
But then it ends up looking like a very big building. And I, we, I've got the addresses of some of the other ones in Arlington, and I want to go look at them to see what type of, you know, what they did on those.
The building's over top of some of the surface parking.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, okay.
Not open air.
Okay.
And it's, there's some of it that's out of the edge of the building.
Something like the Broadway.
Yeah, like the Broadway, or, you know, kind of like the just, what is that, the building on North Washington that kind of has parking that's kind of out in?
Jennings.
Jennings, it's a little bit kind of like that.
Okay, well...
So, yeah, and we, the only thing, we talked, we talked to them a little bit about the park having better screening, because it looked like, at least in their drawings, that people could walk into the parking deck from the outside. We thought they should have it more secure, and they said that they planned to, so...
And this company's a spinoff of Sunrise.
Oh, okay.
They broke from Sunrise, so you can pretty consider that concept.
Okay.
Right.
Great.
Yeah, but overall, I mean, I think we'll have to look at parking. I think we're going to look at the facade. Like, the architecture's not bad, but the front is definitely more of an old-fashioned look. But I'm not sure I have a real problem with it.
Okay.
I mean, you know, it's not flowers.
Okay, well, as long as we get another look at it, that would be great, yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Lindy, did you have a report on something?
Did you have a question on that project, though?
Oh, I think the question that I had was, is the architecture going to be conform with the architecture on Broad Street, in a sense that, you know, you have these nice condominiums that are modern, that are coming up, so are we going to get a facade that looks kind of like that?
It is brick, the whole, it, it looks like the rest of Broad Street, and that it's a full brick face. And it's brick around the corner, just isn't brick all the way to the back. But the design itself is a little bit of an older design, it's not a modern design, in my mind, just looking at it. And they had, they used bricks to make these patterns, so it has a, it kind of, I think in a way, it's kind of a taste thing, so I'm not sure it's something, it wasn't exactly my taste, but I don't think it was too out of the box. And, you know, if you look at the Broadway, the Broadway's probably not that modern-looking either.
Yeah, I agree with that, yeah.
But I think, I think it kind of works with the Broadway. But it definitely isn't like the Pearson or Spectrum.
And, yeah. And then I went to the ribbon cutting for Dominion Jewelry, and that is a gorgeous building. You know, we always talking about Class A office and everything, I think this is Class AA. It is beautiful on the outside and beautiful on the inside. What was particularly really good, and we've got to keep this in mind whenever any other development comes along in that row of buildings, is that it's connected with the townhouses, the business townhouses, and it's connected in the back. So there's no barrier. So the parking could be there first. And the, I think the landscaping that they put back there was going to be very, very nice when it gets filled in, quite a few trees, good parking. And then you can see where, if the next lot gets developed for a business, you could continue that pattern down the way. So there isn't, you know, the need for going in and out if you wanted to go to a couple of different places.
Oh, that's great.
But the interior and the roof, the metal roof on that thing is gorgeous, oh my gosh. It's just magnificent. You know, lots of diamonds floating around all over the place, it was pretty cool.
Did they let you try them on?
And, yeah, I mean, I was looking at people's hands and saying, ooh, whoa, whoa. And then, of course, they had the ribbon cutting for the Dominion Wine Shop, which is also owned by the same owner, so the same family. Nope. Okay, then I get, this friends of, friends of, okay. Friends of. But I was really impressed, you know, with what they've done. And Rachel, the one daughter who's here all the time, was very pleased with everything. But the other thing is, is what good community members. I didn't realize they did so much for the Education Foundation and stuff like that. So, I mean, you talk about a lot of our businesses that come in, they really are community-oriented, which is pretty awesome.
Well, thank you, Lindy. Russ, do you have any liking or transportation?
I have neither.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any? Okay, I went to the EDC meeting on Friday, and where we saw a possibility of parcel consolidation at West and West Broad. And it would be the east side of West and West Broad. And it's quite a large development, it was completely conceptual, I don't know how far they've gone, with actually getting options on the properties. But it's something that will be moving along. Lots of residential, possible drugstore, lots of, plenty of retail, too.
And a hotel.
And a hotel. So it'll be an interesting project.
What I...
We do have, we do have a, the concept, if you want to look at it afterwards, and, but it's in the early stages. I think this was the first time it's coming for anyone. And I know Nick Benton was there, so he'll get to read all about it in the paper soon.
I think I read it, Mark.
Oh, it's already out? Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
It must have been online. I don't do online.
Could I add on?
Sure.
But what I thought was really good is the consolidation of property. They go down to the church property on Park, all the way down to the, to the two houses that are owned by St. James. And then they go all the way down where it's Urgent Care is, and they're looking at, they've been talking with the people with that two-story brick building, which is the accounting office, to get that, too.
Yeah.
So it would be a complete consolidation of that entire four acres.
Right, that was a large parcel, yeah.
Huge, huge piece of property. But a couple of things, the thing, concept that I like is they do have underground parking, but in the perimeter of the development, they have on-level parking for the businesses, which is something, you know, we've often run into, where we keep talking, well, people won't go park in a garage just to run in to do something, you know. So it's got some real interesting possibilities. Big thing is, don't get the name Spectrum mixed up with the Spectrum Development, which was done by Waterford. And this is Spectrum Development Company out of Vienna.
Thank you. I had to leave a little early, so I didn't get all of that part of it. Okay, so if there are no more planning commission reports, I will ask for receipt of petitions from the audience. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the planning commission on things other than are on our agenda? Seeing none, I'll ask if we have speaker slips for later? You do? Okay, good. That was just an aside. The planning director's report. I see we've got two big reports from you, Jim. I just have one question before you even get started. Are all of these numbers for each month, or are they total number for the year?
The chart in the back?
On the front.
On the front. This is for that particular month.
Oh, okay, all right.
And then in the very back...
I thought it was, but some of these numbers seem really big, so I can...
Well, and what the chair is referring to is our monthly report, where we've, we've changed our format to try to put all the numbers in one place, so you can see them.
Right.
And so it has, it is, it is very busy. And the last chart that is a wrap-up of the fiscal year, which would be July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013, just one indicator, you can see the fees that have been collected based on projects that have been processed. There's been a big uptick in 2013, and it's almost triple, it's more than triple what was done in 2011. So we've been very busy, commission's been busy. This is a combination of just ongoing construction here in the city, a single-family, some, some business renovations, a lot of commercial fitting outs, if you will, and then several big projects, including Northgate, and the two big special exceptions that went through the City Council and the Planning Commission. So next year, these do not include numbers for building permits, which will be in the next fiscal year. So it's, it's been very busy, and that's one of the reasons our office has been so busy. It's an indicator, if you will.
One of the things I noticed was the single-family dwelling permits, are any of those on substandard lots?
I know that at least, there is under construction right now, another, two houses on Lincoln that have been, a house that's been cleared and is under construction. I think a couple of the, that was a property owner who was at one of the earlier hearings.
Ah, okay.
And that, that is moving forward.
Oh, I think we knew that was coming, yeah.
Yes.
And that's in the June one, yeah, right.
They were one of the ones who was in process, and was concerned, they were concerned about where they would, whether they could continue or not.
Any other questions on the planning director's report? Thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Okay.
We have no old business, but we do have some items on the new business calendar. The first is ordinance TO 13-9, the ordinance to amend Chapter 48 zoning, and it's about the substandard lots. So we're going to hold a hearing, and we're going to recommend to the City Council. And I, Mr. Foster is here to help us with any legal nuances of the, what we're going to be proposing. Mr. Snyder, do you have an overview of this?
Yes, Madam Chair, and members of the commission, as you know, this is an issue that has been, something that has been of great concern to citizens and property owners and developers for several years here in the City of Falls Church. This is a recommendation to pass an ordinance to close a loophole that allows properties that have a property with a house straddling two substandard lots to be torn down, and those individual lots be developed as substandard lots. There has been a lengthy process for this, starting with work sessions with the planning commission and City Council, a listening session in December 2012 by this body, follow-up work sessions with City Council, and commission recommendations to them to move forward with this. First reading by City Council to move this forward, and that has been, that will be followed by this hearing tonight by the planning commission, and then a second reading by City Council next Monday, July 22. The purpose of this is to bring the zoning ordinance and our practices more in compliance with the comprehensive plan. This practice of development of substandard lots basically takes the density of the areas so developed beyond the limits of the comprehensive plan, which calls out for four units an acre and six units an acre, depending on which one of the residential categories is on the, on that portion of the city's land use plan. Residential properties make up the majority of the acreage here in the city, some 725 acres here in the city, about 523 are Zoned R1A, 202 R1B, and it's about 67% of all the property here in the city. So it's that character for the single-family area that has a lot to do with how people perceive Falls Church. Now, this commission and the council have made it clear that development of commercial areas is a priority, and that's where, you know, higher density in compliance with the comprehensive plan for those areas is taking place. But this practice takes the units per acre, in some cases, over six units an acre in the 7.26 dwelling units an acre category. And over time, this begins to undermine the effectiveness of the comprehensive plan. It's always desirable to have your zoning and land use plan, comprehensive plans in conformance with one another. So a very simple set of regulations has been proposed, that contiguous substandard lots would be considered combined for the purposes of administering all zoning regulations as of August 1, 2013, if one home straddled or touched the contiguous lots as of that date. Furthermore, there's a recommendation that this would not apply, this, the limitations would not be applied to properties until August 1, 2014, if the substandard lots were placed in separate ownership and those were recorded in the land records, that a grading plan that met our standards had been filed, and that a demolition permit had been applied for. In those instances, someone who had these properties could go through those steps, and if they did those before August 1, 2014, they could go forward. We have had very limited response, or comment really, to the proposed changes. We did do mailings to all of the properties, some 283 houses, 400-plus lots, with all of the information to date. We've answered several phone calls and inquiries. We got today, I think, three additional emails, one from Peggy Reel, one from Paul Perro, and one from Jim Custer, 606 Oak Street. The first two were in favor, and the last one had some concerns about this change to the ordinance. You also have a letter from Vipas endorsing this proposed change. Mr. John Foster, our city attorney, has been following this and very involved in it. He is here tonight and has some additional thoughts about ways to make sure that when this is, if this is approved, that it's tight enough to make sure that we close this loophole appropriately, and we don't leave properties with an opportunity for them to be developed later than 2014. So he will speak to you, I think, on that in a minute. But we did do an extensive outreach, we have answered a lot of questions, there is a lot of mapping that's been done.
Yes.
And I think the information effort that was put out has been helpful to people, understanding what, what the project, what the changes would mean, and how, how it would affect them individually.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Chair, Chair Rogers, I did just want to make sure that you and the other members of the commission had received the memo I'd sent out by email earlier this afternoon. It did provide some proposed tweaks to the language, really to address the primary concern that I have, and I know that other members of staff have. And that is that the conditions under the grandfather provision be tightened up to require that a grading plan also had been approved by the city, and that a demolition of the principal structure actually has occurred. And what's driving my concern is that if we don't include that, it does provide an incentive for certain developers to work with property owners, to basically get a grading plan submitted and then sit on it literally for years. And that, I think, would at least have the potential to frustrate the goal here, which is to stop this redevelopment that is really in conflict with the density provisions of the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. And so I wanted to bring that to your attention. I've also made some other non-substantive proposed changes to the ordinance that, you know, looking down the road to possible legal challenges, I think will make it easier to defend in the event that we do get challenged in court. With that, I'm happy to answer any, any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Foster?
Okay, I just have one quick one. The change numbered three, it starts with a building permit application, meeting all applicable requirements, has been filed with the city for the demolition, and the principal structure has been demolished. Is that, is that the language that is going to require, not allow people sitting on the permits for years? Is that particular language?
That's correct. That's directed towards addressing the, the concerns that I just identified. And also, there's a change to paragraph two right above that, that requires not only that the grading plan has been submitted and met all applicable requirements, but it also has to have been approved by the city.
And, and who would approve that grading plan?
I believe that that is reviewed by a couple of departments at least. Zoning reviews it, and I'll certainly ask for Mr. Snyder's input here, but I believe zoning reviews it, as does the Department of Public Works...
Yes.
For Chesapeake compliance. So those two departments review.
And, and that's already in the code. We wouldn't have to mention that.
Yes. That's correct.
That's assumed, okay.
Yes.
And then the other one is, is about the proof of recordation with Arlington County, right?
That's correct.
That is your language as well.
Really, it's making sure that those things which were mentioned in the exclusion of the grandfathering requirements, that they actually have taken place, as opposed to been applied for, or, you know...
And, and so, because we didn't have that language when we looked at it first, would we have to, this is a process question, would we have to read this entire language into the record so that, because the only thing we have is this memo, we, we have nothing.
We don't have anything else.
We don't have anything else. So I'm just assuming we would read this entire suggested, suggested language into the record?
You could do that. You could also, you know, take the portion that is the ordinance only and make that part of the record. In other words, I, I mean, you have two ways to do it. You could read it into the record. We could also, you know, cut out or excise this code section here with the changes that we've talked about, and we could make that part of the record after the meeting. I mean, I'll leave that up to you.
Okay, I, I think I would prefer to have it read in. I mean, it's not that long, it's, what, five or six sentences?
Yeah. One, one other thing that I did want to identify, in, in putting this together, I wanted to bring to your attention, the grandfather date was originally August 1, 2014.
Right.
I have in there a date of February 1, 2014. That obviously changes the one-year grandfather period to a six-month period. I take no position on that, that's a policy decision, it's not a legal one. The legal question that comes out of that is, you know, is that within the scope of the notice? The answer to that is yes.
Oh, good.
We worked very carefully in the advertisement to give you, as well as the city council, will maximum flexibility when this goes forward on July 22.
Right, because our original recommendation was that it be, go into effect immediately upon approval. And, and then we kind of agreed to a six-month, but then the council pushed it to a year. So I'm comfortable with the February 1.
Right, again, that's a policy call, it's up to you.
Yeah.
I, just, while we have you up here, this is, I was kind of saving this for later, but one of the, of the, I think, I mean for, if it's not a legal question, if someone had, has there been any instance in the city where someone had one of these substandard lots, the house was torn down? Does the city have any ability to go back and collect back taxes? If, if, in other words, if there hasn't been payment for, as if it were two lots, it was only one lot? Does the city then have a retroactive ability to collect taxes on those?
We, I'm not aware of that ever having been done in, in the city. I have not been asked to look at whether legally we could do that. I, I, certainly if, if the planning commission would like me to look into that issue, I can do that, whether, you know, the city has the ability to, legal authority and legal ability to charge retroactively for past taxes. I, you know, my immediate reaction is, under the Virginia Code, I think, assuming we even could do it, we would probably be limited to going back three years, which is the statute of limitations. But I need to, you know, crack the law books and see if we could even go back three years, if you want me to.
Well, it's certainly something that's been suggested to us.
Well, the only, I was just curious. I, I mean, as far as I know, we've never done it, so it's fine. Okay, got it.
I think in terms of, just for clarification, I believe our assessor does not assess people extra for having two lots, if there's only one property on it. He does not assume that there's developable as two properties. So, because I think there may have been one of these correspondence pieces to the, to the commission that implied that that was the case. My understanding is, they don't assume that there's an extra developable lot there.
But...
Unless and until that demolition has taken place and someone's recorded lots.
In the exciting and checkered history of this whole issue, there have been several landowners that I can think of, that actually for, in one case, three or four decades, paid on multiple lots. I mean, one of the challenges that the city had is that they actually had been paying as if these were, were developable lots. So I was just curious if...
Not aware of it.
In this issue, all right, fine.
Was that a case where the house straddled? Because I do know there was a house that was in the middle lot and did not touch the other two lots, so that they were separate lots. It was, they had bought three strips, and they had, their actual house was on one of the strips. And I think they did pay taxes, but they weren't, those two lots were not combined by the house.
I, I don't know.
Yeah.
That could be, that there are situations like that, where particularly in old subdivisions, where someone may have had three lots, built a house on one lot discreetly, and the other lots were simply there, was common years and years ago.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I guess we should see if there are any petitions to, from the audience. Madam Chair, in addition to the...
Madam Chair, in addition to the public comments that you received with your staff report, additional ones, four that came in late this afternoon, were provided to you at the dais. And I have two speaker slips. The first is for Nancy Williams of 1011 Birch Street.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing my, my name is Nancy Williams. I live at 1011 Birch Street. I am opposed to the combining proposal. I'm opposed to it for a couple of reasons. First, as you've heard, not every one of the homeowners that are on these split lots is planning to tear down and build it, build for two. And so even if every one of them did, it would be an additional 249 homes over the 234 that are there now by the count of the 483 lots. And I think that that difference, as far as density to the city, is really de minimis. And the, I think that it is, I would respectfully disagree about it degrading the efficacy of the comprehensive zoning plan. I think that if you look at the way that the lots are spread out throughout the city, I think that it would be, as I said, a negligible difference. However, even if that passes, I would like, on a personal level, written confirmation from the city as to the situation in my particular case. I've left a voicemail for you, as you've probably got. I've spoken to the zoning folks, and I've been told that in my particular case, you've not even considered it. And what it is, is that my two lots are bisected almost diagonally by Fairfax County and the City of Falls Church. I pay taxes to both jurisdictions. Both of my lots are recorded in both Arlington County Courthouse and the Fairfax County Courthouse. And if you were to combine, and none of my street footage, by the way, is in the city. So my entire street frontage is in Fairfax County. I've been unable to get an answer from you all about whether or not I would be exempt. The surmise from zoning was that they believed I would be exempt, but what I would like, what I would respectfully ask, is written confirmation that I am indeed exempt because of my particular situation where one lot, in fact, the majority is in Fairfax County, the other lot, no street frontage in the city with about two-thirds of the back of it, basically my backyards are in the city. And so as I look, that's what I want. I would like written confirmation that I am exempt, because I believe that my unique circumstance puts me in a situation where combining it would be really a taking of my Fairfax County property for which they would issue me a building permit. Fairfax, in fact, is unsure whether they would give me a building permit for both lots, or whether I would have to go to City of Falls Church for one, but the street frontage issue seems to be leaning them towards saying that it would be Fairfax County.
Well, I think you certainly deserve to have some kind of a written decision, but that isn't something that's under our ability to do. This is, we're just doing this specific ordinance, and how it would affect your property is something that I think would, you would have to get from the city. And is that so, Mr. Foster?
I, I would like to meet with you. And look at your, it looks like she has a plat here, and so I'd like to see that. Just, but just so, since we're all here, and so you understand.
I mean, we can't tell if it can be the Fairfax County property.
As Chair Rogers indicated, the planning commission cannot issue written determinations. I cannot issue written determinations to property owners. The zoning administrator can issue written determinations.
The zoning can.
The zoning administrator can do that.
They said they had no idea.
But here's the complicating factor, and we should meet offline, but the complicating factor is this ordinance has not yet been adopted, so it's all hypothetical.
Right, it's all hypothetical.
And so the zoning administrator is not, you know, and really cannot answer hypothetical questions. So once, if the ordinance is adopted, he would then be in a position to make a determination as to your lot. But before we go through all that, I would like to sit down and look at, you know, the plat that you've brought, and maybe after we step away from the lecture, and I can get your availability, and we can set up a meeting.
Okay. And obviously, you can understand why I would like to have the written determination before anything is passed.
Certainly can, yes. Thank you very much. We never intended to affect your Fairfax County property.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Our second speaker is Joey Rahandwa at 408 Van Buren Street.
What's the address on Van Buren?
408.
408.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
I just wanted to bring up a couple, I guess, questions on the details of the ordinance, not for against. My house is built now, so I'm, I'm okay. The, what Mr. Foster was saying earlier, that it's a six-month, I just, I just want to be clear, because I have so many people calling me asking me, hey, can we build houses? Can we not build houses? All these things. So I need to know what to tell them, what's going forward next week. So it's a six-month, basically, grandfather clause. If someone wants to build their house, they have six, two houses, they can sell it to two separate owners for six months. And then what I just heard today is that in that six months, they have to get designs done for the house, a grading plan done for the house, submitted to the city, approved by the city, Seabert meeting approved, demolition permit obtained, then you, I don't know if you guys know the process, then after you get demolition, you demolish the house, then you have to put all your, you know, ENS controls, then you go back and you get the building permit. So that all needs to be done within six months also.
I don't think the building permit would have to be issued. I think it was demolition per...
Right.
The house would need to be demolished and...
Well, it's the same thing. After the house is demolished, you've already done all the paperwork for a building permit, so it's the same point.
Well, that's what we're considering. We haven't voted on it yet, as you know.
So from our, from my standpoint, if that's the case, that's impossible. It takes two months to design a house, minimum, and a grading plan, and it takes, the fastest I've ever done it, I've done 20-plus houses now, is about three and a half months to get from submitting it to the actual, after the Seabert meeting, getting the plans handed over. So you're talking minimum, if everything goes as smooth as possible, five and a half months. And so if you're saying you have six months to do it, that means, that's really tough, I think, for people to sell their property in 10 days, two weeks. So I don't know if that's a really realistic, if you're going to do that, then might as well say, hey, the day the council votes, no one can sell.
Well, that was our original intention.
Yeah, then I would just do that, instead of trying to, it'd be crazy for people trying to...
Well, we wanted to make sure that people had, people who had something in the works right now...
Okay, so for people in the works.
Weren't rushed.
Okay.
Okay.
That makes sense, then. I just want to get the details right, so I can tell everyone.
Yeah. But again, we haven't, we haven't voted on this, so...
And ultimately, it'll be city councils.
Right, it has to go to the council.
But this is what's going forward to the city council on Monday to vote. Okay, got it.
That's what we're looking at.
Okay. Thank you. That's, so that answers that question. Second question, on the GIS mapping that everyone got in the mailing, that says 234 houses and 483 lots. It's sort of laughable. So I can go on the, online and click at every one of these properties and look at which ones are actually buildable lots. I went through about, I don't know, 100, 100 or so properties, and I got like six buildable lots out of it. So like, if you're looking at the map, this whole section, which is like Oak, Lee, Pennsylvania, Fulton, and Park, this whole chunk right here, those are all 20-foot lots. And so like, the house I built at 309 Pennsylvania, that's sitting on six lots. House I built at 306 North Lee, that's sitting on five lots. Those are 20-foot and not buildable, so those don't count. Then if you take out all the corner lots, because you have setbacks, you can't do corner lots. And so I think you end up with like 30 houses. And so I, I don't know if that, I think it's...
We, you're preaching to the choir.
Yeah, we realize that there's some problems.
We, at every public meeting, asked, begged, pleaded, cajoled the city staff to actually be more accurate with the list.
And let me, let me, let me address this. Partly what we're trying to do is make sure anybody who's got a substandard lot is aware of the issue. And so, and we use GIS to identify those, and then where there might be a property touching a lot as well. So we've tried to over-notify, recognizing that most people have no intention of doing this, some do, but making sure those who might have any, might have any interest are aware of it. So it's, it's an effort to kind of have a broader array of properties identified and notified, so that we don't miss anybody. So that, that is, that's in fact what's happening.
I agree, because technically, they are substandard lots.
And so that's, and, and, I just wanted to clarify that, we're trying to make sure those who might have an interest in any way are notified. We sent them all individual mailings with all the information. Most people found, gee, I don't have a problem, I'm not intending to do this. But just, just so the public understands.
And then my other question I have is, I think everyone is on agreement, they don't like the 40-foot lots, the 24-foot wide houses. That's been, I hear it, you know, like, I think everyone is on the same page with that one. I do, the 30-foot wide houses and the 50-foot lots, does everyone feel the same about that? I just, I know everyone looks at that Lincoln Avenue Street, and they're like, I hate that, so I don't want those. And I get that, I totally understand it. But if you go down Lincoln, like, from West going all the way down to Great Falls Street, those are all 50-foot wide lots, and those are all 30-foot wide houses. What is that, like 100 houses probably, it's five blocks? And those are all built like in the 40s and 50s. And so, I don't know, everyone's like, we're changing the character of soul, or whatever it is of the, of the town or the community. Those already exist. So, and like, I built the house at 605 Lincoln. We built two, well, those are both custom homes, I didn't, we designed them, but they're not my style, but it was two 50-foot lots, two 30-foot houses. And so that, they just matched everyone on that street. And so since it's a 50-foot wide lot, that's substandard, because in R1B, it's 60-foot wide. So now we're saying that person can't sell those two lots, even though the rest of their whole five blocks this way and that way is all 50-foot wide lots with 30-foot houses already built. And that seems a little weird. I don't know if that's a property rights issue or a planning issue, but this person would have a 100-foot wide lot, which is 18,000 square feet, in a R1B, and they can build one house. And that doesn't seem right when the whole rest of the street is all 50, you know, you know, one house on a 50-foot lot. So I don't know, from a planning standpoint, is that what you want? Or are we just looking at the, are we really focused on the 40-foot wide lots, but not paying attention to the 50 or the 55-foot wide lots in the R1B, or the 70-foot lots in the R1A? And when I go through this list and I start finding these things, I start looking at some of these lots, like, there's one on the other side of Broad Street, it's 21,000 square feet, and we're going to say you can build one house on that, when right now it's 75, and it's just, it's short of 500 feet, you know? So I don't, I just want to make sure everyone's aware that this is encompassing everything, and not just those 40-foot houses, which no one likes, or 40-foot wide lots that no one likes. The second thing is, once you start getting these huge lots, when you go, you say, hey, you can only build one house on it, people, they, they want to maximize when they're selling their lot, and they're going to find other things to do. Duplexes, that's going to start popping up here, which have never come up before. So I don't know why you're saying no. A duplex is a 50-foot wide lot, two of them is 100 feet wide. That's the minimum standard for a duplex, is 100 feet wide. So what I'm talking about, that's exactly what happened. So if someone's saying, Joey, I want you to build a $1.8 million house and sell it, I'm going to say no. They're going to say, Joey, can you build me a $900,000 duplex, two of them? I'll say, yeah, that'll make sense. So I think you're, you're encouraging things that have never been done here to get pushed, which we have no interest in doing, or you've never seen before. And so there's all these things that are going to come out that we've never thought about when we're looking at bigger lots, not the 40-feet-wide ones. I'm talking about the 50, 55, 60, 70, those bigger lots, which are considered substandard, even though they're huge lot sizes, but small frontages. And that's, that's it.
Can I respond?
Yeah. Yeah, I just, you know, you were talking about, do we care about this? Do we care about what that looks? This is really not about aesthetics that much, because you can't really force developments to look good. I mean, do, the two houses on West Street, the two really thin beach-looking houses, I think they look ridiculous. But then there are substandard houses that Mr. MacArthur did, that actually look nice because they look like cottages. So, but that's my aesthetic field, that he built a house that went with the lot and went with the neighborhood a little bit more. I think that, to me, the issue here is that our zoning code, if you read the preamble with about preserving and protecting the neighborhood flavor. And I think that when they put this law on the books in the 30s, that you were not to subdivide these two lots, one's a house with over them, it was purposeful. It was because they felt like, once you had a house in this lot, that that should remain combined. And I think part of it is, if I bought a house next door, that's just on one lot for whatever reason, and I see this house next to me, it's about the same size, it's pretty far from my house, I'm thinking, this is not a bad deal. But you could wake up one day and suddenly you have two houses next to you, and one is quite closer to you, because it's substandard. And I think, to me, that's kind of what the comprehensive plan in the zoning code is really about, trying to keep a certain neighborhood's style and flavor. And I mean, this is old law. This, this law about substandard lots is very old, and it's only in the recent decade or so that a loophole was found. And what's concerning to me is many people own these lots in the past and didn't ever get to get the value out of it that later on, developers were able to get because they knew how to use a loophole. In fact, people have sold their lots in recent years to developers, not knowing that they could have two houses on it, and they were not paid the amount of money they should have been paid for two lots. Now, you can say that's their fault, their ignorance on not being aware of the loophole. But if you're a citizen and you read the code as it stands right now, you would never have any idea that you could have two lots there. You would think, my house is across the lots, they're combined.
Yeah.
So to me, it's about fairness.
It's a code issue.
It's about, it's about what the code was meant to do at the very beginning, it's about fairness, and it's about what the comprehensive plan is about. And that comprehensive plan, we didn't write that. That went out to citizens. Citizens came, that comprehensive plan, the current version, took forever to do, because this was what citizens said they wanted for their city. And it's our job to make sure that we're following that comprehensive plan as much as possible.
And as well, my, my stance is, I'm not against this. I'm actually extremely happy that you guys are taking care of this, so I don't have to tell clients, hey, you might be sued if we build you a house. Like, that's the worst thing ever. So I'm actually very relieved that I know going forward, I'm not going to be sued by anybody. So it's a great feeling, I'm very, very happy that this is going to be a shut case, that I'll never have to hear this again. But I guess from the planning stand, so this is an ordinance issue that I think we're done, but from a planning standpoint, I really do worry about these things, because like that Lincoln Avenue, those houses were built in the 40s, like right after the Depression, basically. They're not quality houses, the ones that are on substandard lots. And so what's going to happen is like this Piment Hills effect, where people are going to do little additions on in the back. Instead of selling their lots, you know, two lots for 730 right now, you can sell one lot for 530, right? Or they can do like a little addition and sell it for 650. And so we're going to see a lot of these small additions on these really bad structural houses, which is going to end up looking like Piment Hills instead of new skinny houses. Now, from a planning standpoint, I don't know if you want skinny houses, or if you want, you know, just like a lose-lose maybe. But again, that's probably a planning situation and not an ordinance issue.
That's not a planning situation. That's the option of the person who owns the property. If they want to put a small addition on the back of their house and have it look like Piment Hill, that's their option.
Well, it's a seller's, I'm talking about the sellers, because sellers are the one who get out, and then they're never here again.
Well, yeah, but they're, they're eventually going to be the sellers.
Yeah.
They own the property. If they want to put a small addition and keep a small house, that's their option.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any further discussion on this?
Discussion, but just the fact that, you know, we have this massive little document here that goes all the way back to even minutes of a meeting in 2006, where we were discussing this. And a little bit about the progression. When we first started out in all this, there were whole, almost hodgepodge of items that we were trying to change within the code, and we were trying to make big changes, but we ended up having to make a little change here, a little change there, about the height, how you measure it, pipe stems. And so this is about, so there's a long, long history in all of this, and this is the one last thing that came up in 2006. It wasn't decided on, and it's still around. That has to be decided on. So we've gone through this whole, what are people going to be doing for all these years on this? And so there's a, you know, as I say, just a huge history of well-thought-out, you know, trying to figure out exactly, you know, there was even a point to going to a minimum lot size, lot size, just to try to get around this problem, because we could, that problem was starting to become more apparent through all this. So I think it's about time we really, you know, get it down. And I hope that whatever we pass tonight, the council will again take our suggestions and not mess, not mess with it.
Ms. Meigs?
You know, I'm not gonna, I don't have the long, 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 very long history that a lot of people do with this issue. You know, really, two thousand and six was sort of when I came in. But I think it actually sort of predates that by a couple of decades. You know, I think that I would just sort of hit on one thing, and I'm not picking on you, but that I would sort of emphasize in when we had the meeting, I think, with the council. You know, trying to look forward, I'm not a real estate economist. I'm not smart enough to figure out what's gonna happen in a decade or five years. But, you know, one of my great frustrations with this is, I understand you wanna build less expensive houses. I'm not sure that that's good for the city. I'm not sure that's where the city's going. I think this kind of false choice of skinny houses, goofy houses with additions, or a million-eight houses, everybody has this sort of neo-political socialism McMansion debate about whether that's good or bad. You know, I think at the end of the day, who really, we're not about the real estate development community and building inexpensive houses. We're sort of about people maximizing the value. And, you know, maybe we're driving towards a million-eight. Maybe we're driving towards two-million-dollar houses, for good or for bad. I certainly think this issue has come, its time has come, for God's sakes. And I don't think the outcome, I mean, certainly, as we were going through some of these, you know, the beneficiary for a lot of these substandard lots really were not the original landowner. It was the developer who was able to, you know, get kind of a good deal on two lots and build two, you know, okay houses. So, you know, my hope is, we sort of get this going and move on to bigger and better things.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay, I would entertain the motion for this.
Madam Chair, before you do that, would you close the public hearing?
Yes. We'll close the hearing to the public. Thank you, Ms. J. Mr. Snyder, do you have any further comment?
No, I think we're, I think we're ready for the commission to make its motion. Go forward.
Madam Chair, since you've got the, is, are you gonna be doing, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna...
Because I think it needs to be read all the way through.
Yeah, we agreed to that.
Okay. Yes. I move that the Planning Commission recommended the City Council to affirm in part and overturns in part ordinance T zero one three dash one six, ordinance to amend Chapter forty-eight, zoning Article five supplementary regulations, Division six, height, lot, and yard regulations, Section one one zero two, to bring redevelopment of existing substandard lots into closer alignment with the comprehensive plan of the City of Falls Church, should be approved with the following modifications. And I'm... gonna read the following. Any lot of official record as of February fourteenth, nineteen forty-four, or any lot of a subdivision approved by the city from February fourteenth, nineteen forty-four, to the effective date of the ordinance from which this division is derived, which does not meet the lot size requirement for the district in which it is located, is hereby deemed a substandard lot. A substandard lot may by itself be used for a one-family dwelling, provided all of the following requirements are satisfied. A, it is in an R district. And B, it has not been combined and cannot be reasonably combined with other property to meet the minimum lot size requirements. Contiguous substandard lots shall be considered combined for the purposes of administering all zoning regulations if on or after August first, two thousand and thirteen, the principal structure on the lot straddled or touched a contiguous lot as of that date, and that home used for both substandard lots for setback purposes. Contiguous substandard lots shall not be considered combined if they satisfy all of the following requirements on or before...
November, what, February?
February one, two thousand and fourteen. The substandard lots have been placed in separate ownership, and Arlington County land recrodation of such has been completed, and proof of such recrodation has provided to city staff. A complete grading plan meets all applicable requirements for the lots, has been applied for and accepted by the city for review and approved by the city. Number three, a building permit application meeting all applicable requirements has been filled with the city for the demolition of the principal structure, and the principal structure has been demolished.
Thank you. And are you reading exactly from the memo?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
And are we okay with February first, two thousand and fourteen?
I am.
Yes, fine. All right, fine.
That's good. Okay. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, what Rob has read into the record as the motion. Is there any further discussion?
Man, we can clear a room.
Ms. J, would you please call the roll? Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Meigs?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Bodeska?
Yes.
Mr. John?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you all for your patience in this and our hard work. I think we did a lot of hard work on this.
It isn't. It just, there isn't that much change.
No, there's not, there's not much change.
I couldn't figure out. I started to just read the changes, but I couldn't figure out how to read this.
Yeah, yeah. So, as long as Ms. J has the memo, then we can...
And we will put, we'll get that language out for folks, and it'll be included in the staff report that will be going out this week to City Council.
City Council, good.
So, and available to the public.
And, and you can say that it was a unanimous vote.
Yes.
I think that language is tightening up what was there.
Thank you all. I think, yes, it does.
And that was a result of, part of what feedback that the attorney's been getting and listening to.
Good. I think, I haven't gotten anything that was opposed to this. Any of my calls or emails this week have not been opposed to this. Okay, so, we will move on to New Business B, T O thirteen dash twelve, an ordinance to amend and revise Chapter fifteen in Part two, Code of Ordinance, to update fees and language in the urban forestry and engineering and public works and public works applications. I'm, and development services. Yes. So, we're going to hold a public hearing and do a recommendation on this.
And this is before the commission, because some of these fees relate to items in the zoning ordinance, although they're contained separately in Chapter fifteen. And so, there are minor changes. We did make some changes to include a fee for the written zoning determination letter. We have some small changes to residential variance, I think up to five hundred dollars, some signs. Occupancy permits are changed slightly, including raising those for automobile and payday loan and pawn shops. Automobile financing up to five hundred dollars. There's more work involved with keeping those consistent with their approval. And we have also provided some flexibility for COs, where someone may be moving from one office to another on the same, same building. Previously, they were having to pay two hundred dollars for that CO. So, that is something we heard in the last couple of years, that people found to be problematic. So, there is a proviso, the building official can waive that kind of situation, where someone's moving from one office suite to the next in similar building. So, these are minor changes. We update these every two years. There are several items that are related to public works. Those are the primary ones, and those are included in the, in the report and shown in blue. But it's coming for the commission, because there is a zoning ordinance relationship, if you will. We're recommending approval.
All right. Is there any discussion on this? Yes. Russ?
Yeah, I noticed two things that caught my eye. First was on line twenty-six. It had an effective date of July first, two thousand and thirteen. I assume that needs to change.
Yes, that will change. I think what you have is the original report. There was a need to extend the hearing, and raised by the city attorney. So, this is the original report that went, and this would go into effect, this will be heard on the twenty-second by, by City Council. And so, it would go into effect, I believe, August first, two thousand and thirteen.
Okay. And the second was on line forty. There's, between line forty and forty-eight, there's this discussion about accepting credit cards. But it makes no determination of what the decision was gonna be. It says one impact would be that, because Visa, et cetera, customers would be required to use a different card or pay by cash or check. Has this, this issue been resolved? Has, has the decision been made to not accept Visa, or?
I'm not certain about individual cards. We are trying to, we are trying to get, we're trying to not subsidize those fees. And so, we're working through our various internal offices of the city to have this done in a coordinated fashion. I'm not certain whether Visa's ended up being, when accepted or not. Certainly, a widely-used card, but there, that's something, it's an ongoing discussion internally. We don't want to, though, be subsidizing credit card charges on these things, which we have been doing.
Line three sixty-four, three sixty-six, you did put the three percent cost recovery fee. So, I guess if Visa won't allow the cost recovery fee, then we probably won't be taking Visa.
No, they, they were saying that the...
What the jurisdiction is.
Well...
What the language is saying, that you can't have the fee be based on the, the credit card fee can't be based on how much the charge is.
Oh, okay.
I don't think there's anything that prohibits saying it's across-the-board three percent.
Oh, okay.
I mean, based on what I read here. It says Visa...
Yeah, but it's three percent of what? Wouldn't have to be based on the amount?
Well, yeah.
When they process the fees, they, you know, they, they take money. So, that three percent is so that we can recover those costs, some of those costs.
Yeah, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, see, it says that Visa does not permit the imposition of a fee based on percentage of a transaction.
But it doesn't say anything about Visa in this, in, in the actual ordinance.
No, it doesn't. I think that's an administrative decision.
That's an administrative issue that we're, you know, if they would change their policy, we could...
My only comment is, that's a very widely-used card. And I think that limiting that would...
I think one of the things we're finding, though, is people are using that, it's being subsidized. That convenience is not free, and it's coming at a cost to the city. So, we're trying to diminish that. It's a convenient service, but the credit card companies are getting their piece, and we're helping to pay for that. So, we're trying to eliminate that.
So, you're gonna charge them three percent more of what, what their, what the fee is? And that's gonna be a blanket charge? Okay. That clears that up. I don't know if I agree with it, but... Any, Russ?
Yes, I, you know, I asked this question before, and I mean, I don't pretend to understand how, what some of these fees, but I was curious on these, on the violations. Why aren't we charging more for multiple violations? Whether it's the erosion and sediment control, or the urban forestry, or some of these others? These don't seem to me to be anti-business. The tree preservation violation seems pretty light to me. Is there, do you have a logic to...
Well, I think, actually, there is a proposal to change the erosion and sedimentation control, so that, that violation, first, second, third violation, page thirteen, it looks like it goes up from five hundred, seven fifty to a thousand.
And, and I guess...
It's a lot of money per day.
Well...
Oh, that's per day?
Yeah, per day. So, those are, and those are almost more, almost double what they presently are. So, there is a push to...
All right. So, and you can't charge more than ten thousand per violation?
Those are pretty substantial violation fees per day. They're...
All right. If you, I mean, so, tree preservation, first offense seems light. Second offense seems, it's only a hundred dollars more, and you, shame on you, you're a two-time offender. The third offense, by this time, it's becoming a habit. And then, you can keep doing it, and it's a hobby or a vocation.
Would you like to suggest a higher fee?
Well, I don't know. I'm just curious where the, I was curious where all of these numbers came from, but I just saw that one, and it seemed light. I mean, I think Arlington's violation fee, and I defer to you on this complicated topic, is much higher. I will say that if you cut a tree in Arlington...
I don't, I don't know their fees on, on the tree issues. I know the, Public Works went through these and boosted their fees to, to be competitive and to reflect cost. And so, you'll see, most of these, they're either new fees added, or the fees have gone up quite a bit for each of these. They've added additional fees for site burn review beyond what they presently are, resubmital fees, of course, there's stormwater fees added, and additional fees for, for these violations that are quite a bit, quite a big increase from what they presently are for the erosion and sedimentation control. And I think that's consistent with our efforts to try to protect the Chesapeake Bay. So, they, you know, those are really their, their numbers and their, their research, if you will. Terms of the tree, the tree offenses, I think they've added a, in each subsequent offense, a thousand dollars. And that's on page fifteen of sixteen. And they've added a cost element if there's damage to streetscape irrigation. So, those are, those are changes.
And I happen to know someone who was in this conundrum. If you do not protect a tree in Arlington and the tree dies, they, you have to pay the replacement cost, which is tens of thousands of dollars. So, well, I, I always, I'm just curious where, I'm just curious...
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not the arborist, and I haven't reviewed these, their fees specifically. What I'm really doing here is conveying onto you all the, what they've recommended.
Okay, fine.
They feel they need. In terms of, I think Arlington has a pretty sophisticated tree replacement policy and formula, which I was involved in when I was over there and helping develop. They've just got a somewhat different approach, and that's another topic. But they also have developers maintain their street trees, which is different from here as well, so...
I have a quick question.
Yes?
And this is the elimination of the fee concerning the road closure and block party. Why would we take away the hundred-dollar fee if we have to have a policeman spend maybe thirty minutes?
We had a lot of pushback from people on block parties. And I think the manager made a decision that, that he wasn't going to require that. Neighborhoods felt like, gee, we're paying taxes. We ought to be able to close the street and have a block party. This is something the city should allow to happen. So, there was a lot of pushback about that fee, and was felt that it was something that he didn't want us to charge for. So, it's, it's been removed as a fee, and it's not been applied during the last year. We have a, we'll have a flurry of block parties during good weather that different neighborhoods have. I would agree with you, there is a cost to all of these things. There are trucks, and there are barricades, and there's some overtime. It's something that the city is really doing as a part of just allowing these kinds of things to take place and supporting them. And probably, the hundred dollars didn't really cover all the costs. But it's a very good question. But we had a lot of pushback and concern about the fee when it was being applied last year. But I agree with you, there is a cost, and it's probably more than a hundred dollars.
Giving away free money, you know?
Yeah, but it's, it's a neighborhood, it's a neighborhood-community thing, which is one of our bases of being here.
Yes.
One kind of quick question. I probably could answer it myself. But anyway, page fourteen of sixteen, the resubmital of the right-of-way permit application, that applies to all of the right-of-way, not just to the one that we just deleted with the sidewalk café? You see, at the sidewalk café, we zeroed that out, but then, there's that one hundred dollars there.
Well, there are a whole series of right-of-way...
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. Does it refer all the way up? Okay.
I believe it does, yes.
Okay, that's all.
Yeah, and there had been a fee associated with the sidewalk café, but that was felt to be problematic, as those are very popular and...
Yeah, and I'm so glad that that's gone. You know, that, that's something we're trying to encourage. And I know there's ways of doing it to make sure that there's enough walking space and stuff like that.
And I think that's the intent, is trying to make sure that we're managing our public rights away. rights away appropriately, and a sufficient room remaining for the public to get by, and ADA standards to be met.
Right.
I have a couple of questions. One is on page 8 of 16, and I realize that's not in the new, the new chapter. I can't find it in there, anyway. But they say, this says the annual tree contractor license. There's a $3,150 increase under the new fee structure. But I'm not seeing that anywhere in this new, these new pages.
I think they are referring to, there is a, there is a, I believe, a fee for each one that goes up to $100. That's on page 16 of 16. The annual permit fee for a tree contractor is $100.
Oh, okay. So this is, this is the cumulative.
That's cumulative. So I believe that refers to...
Okay, fine. I thought, wow, that's a pretty steep, we won't get anybody to cut down our trees now.
That would be steep.
Yeah.
They're trying to show the collect...
Oh, okay, good.
Cumulative effect of that increase.
All right. So the other thing I have is about the trees. And the tree preservation violations, and I'm assuming that that has to do with if the tree dies. If you haven't put enough fencing around it and it dies, and is that, or that you haven't put any fencing around it?
Well, it could be that. It's whatever violation there is relative to a treaty preservation plan. It could be somebody cutting down a tree when they're not supposed to. So it could be a variety of things, but...
Okay, well, I think if it's somebody cutting down a tree that they're not supposed to, it should be triple that. I mean, I think it's outrageous that people come in and clear-cut their lots when it's, they don't have the permission to do that. And so I'm just wondering, how can we find out what that's all about? And if, if in fact it is cutting down a tree when you're not, you're not okay to do that, then I cannot vote for this. The other thing is on the, where is it? The erosion and sediment control violations? What is the, is the notification process on that? And I speak as one who knows about this. My builder, nor I, were notified that he had let some sediment go into the street, and then there was a fine. Now, I didn't have to pay the fine, but because we weren't notified, they dropped it. But I just want to make sure that there is sufficient notification. I mean, it should go to the homeowner or the builder?
You're talking about the actual fine itself?
Right.
And it was notification?
And I'm assuming this penalty would go to the, to the builder, the sediment, erosion and sediment control violation?
I think it would go to whoever the contractor was, who had installed it. We do our, the community code enforcement violations, we have a specific kind of process of notification. I would have to check and get back to you as to what it in fact is.
I think that that's important, because, you know, these things happen during storms, and whoever is doing, is supposed to be containing it, should at least be notified by someone in the city that they're going to be fined, so that they can make sure they get it, get there and take care of it.
Yeah, and typically, we do a warning first, and then there's a subsequent letter. So, and I would think typically, they would, you know, identify to someone, you've got a problem you need to fix first. But I can double-check with them.
Okay.
On the tree issue, though, I believe, I don't believe we've had a lot of problems with tree violations. What they wanted to do here was to add, you know, a subsequent offense, make sure that that was, if there was a habit, then it got very expensive, kind of. So existing fees remain the same.
But the thing is, once this tree is cut down, there can't be a subsequent offense. I mean, that's, that's it. The tree's gone. So...
Madam Chair? I think from my experience of having been a staff representative to the Seabert meetings for residential grading plans, the tree violation, tree preservation violations, either they didn't put up the fencing around the trees, or one of their contractors came in and removed the tree to move equipment across the tree roots. So it's not taking out the entire tree, although, you know, if they drive over the tree roots, eventually the tree will die.
Right, right, yeah.
I mean, I think Ms. Gee's right, it's typically more of a technical violation of the plan itself. We haven't had a lot of people come in and knock, you know, cut trees down without permission.
But obviously, we don't have anything that...
But I think what they wanted to do was to add another, you know, another level of, if it's a subsequent offense.
I was wondering if the tree commission had seen this.
Yeah.
Because they're usually very sticklish.
Yeah, and there's no, there's no recommendation from them on this.
Well, it's, again, these are things we're doing to increase our ability to better govern these, and we're adding, we're adding fees.
I'd like to give you some more increases here.
Yeah, not mine, but we can ask Public Works to, or Ben to talk about this.
Yeah.
The effort is to try to have additional...
I think as long as you're looking at fees, we may as well tell them what some of our concerns are. Can we do...
You seem resistant to making it higher.
No, they're just, they're not our fees. And so Public Works went through these pretty carefully to see, you know, what would make sense. We had a couple of work sessions with city council, maybe three. And so what they're trying to do is to add more, more help to govern and monitor these things. And so they've added this, this each subsequent offense. They didn't really feel they needed a full, a big overhaul of this. There have not been a lot of these fees collected in the past couple of years, because we really haven't had a big problem there. The one issue that really became an issue of concern was the, there was a proposed fee on the sidewalk cafés, and that became a big discussion. Ultimately, that fee was dropped, but the notion that we needed to govern our, the public space was held, and therefore, it's at zero cost, but we have to get a permit. So what they've done is tried to go through and do reasonable changes that meet the needs of, that they're running into. And so these are primarily Public Works fees. We added for Development Services, some of the fees you see concerning COs, trying to fix things that were too onerous, and then provide a little more clarity on things like zoning determinations, which there wasn't an application or fee. And we wanted to, we need that to be a formal application and fee. And so there was discussion about that, and we, and some of those COs that have uses that take a lot of time, we wanted to bump those up to a higher level. So that's, that's kind of the philosophy of this. The ones that really are under your purview in the sense of zoning issues are primarily the Development Services fees. But we'd be happy to take back to Public Works some of your interest on the, on the tree issues, and your interest in supporting their ability to make sure that violations don't occur, and that those who do violate, pay.
I know there's a tree commission meeting coming up pretty soon, so I'd ask them what their opinion of it was.
But these did go through several vettings of, with city council and others as a part of an update, so.
Yes.
I think, I feel like I've, this is like the third or fourth time I've seen this. I know that we talked about this one time.
Well, I know it came before you last time.
We did bring you it as an information item.
No, no, I know, I'm just, I also think we saw it, maybe I saw it when the council was going through it as well, in one of the work sessions they had. But, but what I was going to say, I was wondering, I mean, I don't want to slow it down. I think part of what I think I'm hearing from Mr. Snyder is you guys have been looking at this for a long time. This has been going on for months, and making small changes and trying to deal with issues. And I'm wondering if we can move forward with recommending it today, if everyone feels like they would, with, with an additional recommendation that, that, because there can be a change made between us and the council, that they consider a separate charge for accidental or on-purpose tree removal that's in violation of the tree preservation plan that perhaps, because I agree with Ruth, that that probably needs to be a little bit more than $350. I think that, I think that if we have specific things like that, we could just add it to the motion.
Agreed.
Good points.
So are you saying on a tree removal, that that should be a higher price, where it says...
Yeah, and we don't have to set it. We can just say we think that they should...
Yeah, well, under, but, you know, maybe separate from the tree preservation violation, that there be a specific and larger charge for a tree that is removed in violation, willfully removed in violation of the tree preservation. But I don't know if we want to say willfully, because they'll say it's accidental, so...
Well, you could conceivably add something like that under the blue, which has the each subsequent offense, you know, or willful tree removal, if that's the specific thing you're trying to get at, making that an expensive item.
Yeah.
Because the effort here was to try to add some additional teeth to this and cost.
Right, yeah, I understand.
And if, Mr. Meeks, if your concern is that 350, you know, is it, isn't a good, that's not sufficient deterrent, then you could, I think this would be a place you could probably add that as a recommendation.
Right.
Where it says each subsequent offense or willful removal, you know, cutting down removal of...
Well, I think, I think...
And it may be, part of this may be significance of the tree as well. I mean, you're talking about a good, you're talking about a tree somebody notices, not...
Well, then we're getting back and forth on who decides what it is. I just think that if a tree...
Is it a tree over six-inch caliper, or...
Well, I know, I think if a tree is in the preservation plan as being there once construction is completed, the penalty for removing it willfully or accidentally should be more than $1,000. It should be like $2,500. Because it's one thing for them not to put the fencing up, it's another thing for, oops, oopsie, the tree's gone. And, I mean, that's just my feeling.
What you can do about it.
Well, I mean, I remember you talking about tree removal. I remember that happened at Reece Place. There were very, two very large trees, almost specimen-level trees, that were supposed to stay, and they were accidentally removed.
My goodness.
And I believe that they were charged a few hundred dollars for it.
Well, I think if you want to make that statement, the place to do that would be at that, in that, in that area where it says each subsequent offense, perhaps add the language of...
Let's, let's leave it to Ben, or the Arbors, the tree commission to get some...
Well, I think we can make a recommendation.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the place, I'm just saying, to get this done, and that would be a place to put that. If you want more definition of what that line, that additional language is adding, you could add something to the effect of, you know, removal of major trees designated to be preserved on a, on a tree preservation plan. Or whatever the right language would be. I think that would be the place to do it. That could then be, I think that'd be within the scope of the notice for city council, and then it could go into effect. So I think if you want to get that done, that would be a good place to do it.
Okay, thank you.
It's a good idea.
Okay, so are we ready for a motion?
It's good to go to Melissa.
Okay, there you go. Understand, because you just came from vacation. You're still resting.
Well, and I have to say, I wasn't totally listening to what Mr. Snyder just said, because I was explaining to Russ about the two trees.
Oh, okay.
So what he was saying, that we could use the modification...
Yes.
...motion?
And specify section 1537, urban forestry, tree preservation violations.
Yeah, see, we've added the line, each subsequent offense, $1,000. That could be a place where you could add that language about removal of trees that were designated to be preserved on it.
And really...
In other words, that becomes a more expensive mistake, or...
Right.
Or oops, kind of factor.
Oops, doesn't cut it.
Yeah. It's not a $350 mistake, it's a $1,000 mistake.
Yeah, oops, doesn't cut it.
Remember that whenever trees are...
So they forfeit the bond if the tree comes out.
Right.
Well, you know, in that, I, you know, I do know about that.
That's a good point. There is a bond for the lanes.
I know about the bond.
So it would come out of the bond.
So maybe that, that is why they're not doing that, because they're saying that that's, it's the effect of the bond. So maybe we are doing something they don't need, because the bonds can be...
Well, I think my bonds were...
Up to $12,000.
Yeah. Mine was not nearly that high, and I took down a lot of trees. It was $2,150.
Right. Well, I get, that kind of begs the question, if they have...
Well, let's say something, if they don't, if the, if they don't want it, and exactly, and the city council doesn't want it, then, but we've made our point.
Good idea.
Okay. I can do that. So rewrite for a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I move that the planning commission recommend to the city council to inform, oh, you know, I gotta, sorry, wait a minute. Because I think I actually have to do this one and then add that. Okay. I move that the planning commission recommend to the city council adoption of ordinance T-013-12, ordinance to amend and revise chapter 15 fees, article 2, Department of Development Services, section 15-20, 15-27, and 15-29, and article 3, Department of Public Works, section 15-36, public work applications, engineering, and section 15-37, public work application, urban forestry. To include updated, include updates to fees and language with an additional suggestion from the planning commission that in section 15-37, urban forestry, that a consideration be made to add a larger fee for an accidental tree removal of a tree that's included in the preservation plan and expected to remain through the construction.
I would say take out the accidental.
Accidental, okay. Remove the accidental, so a larger fee for tree removal of a tree included in the preservation plan and expected to be there at the end of construction. Okay.
Do you have a second for that motion, please?
I second.
Thank you. Further discussion? Rob, thank you for bringing that up. Ms. Gee, would you take the votes, please? Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Bodisca?
Yes.
Mr. John?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, the motion passes.
Thank you all. And as we move this forward, do you think the $1,000 is an appropriate number for that?
I'd go higher, but...
For that, I'd go about $2,000, maybe. $2,500.
$5,000.
Well, no, but I mean, reasonably... I'm trying to stay within the scope of notice here.
Yeah, yeah. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just for informational purposes, something that you might have not gotten a notification of, but the sycamore tree up in the parking lot, Northern Virginia, the tech center is now going to be taken down.
Oh, why?
Well, it's dead.
Oh, well, that's a good reason.
But, you know, it has been dying over the years, but if you remember all the hurrah over that tree.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. But it's been dying and dying and dying, so they've now gotten, they've sent to the council to get permission to take it down. If it's in agreement.
Oh, well, thank you. Thank you, Lyndy. Okay, well, there is no other business, so I'd like to move on to approval of minutes for the 17th of June, 2013. I was not here. Mr. John was not here. So I'm going to count on the rest of you to approve the minutes.
Move to approve the minutes.
I second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain.